Good to go. All right, I'll call on order this meeting of the Whiteland Town Council, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. If we could stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Deb.
Laura Flurry?
Here.
Brad Goedecker?
Here.
David Hawkins is absent. Richard Hill?
Here.
Joe Saylor?
Here.
Uh, invocation?
Uh, it's one way or another. Your heavenly Father has a meeting here to discuss topics that will benefit the people in our community and our country. Come and give us the wisdom to make the right decisions. Let us not make biased decisions, but decisions based on solving the problems of this community. Be our leader during this meeting, show us the way, and let us not think with our own selfish interests. Amen.
Amen.
Um, order business for the day. Does anyone have any additions, subtractions, anything to our tentative agenda?
I forgot to put the short meeting we had last month for the, at four forty-five, that meeting we had.
Oh, the minutes?
Yeah, I forgot to put that on here, so you, that's why you have two minutes.
Okay. So it looks like we'll have minutes for October tenth as well as minutes for October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, is there any issue with adding those minutes to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, I'll add those. Any other, uh, pieces of business? Right, hearing none, we'll move on this order. Um, minutes for October ten, twenty twenty-three. Is there any corrections or additions, tractions or motions?
I'll be abstaining.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October tenth, twenty twenty-three.
I suppose that I need to second. Or are, are you comfortable in proceeding on them?
Richard, were you at the meeting?
I was, I was out, too.
Oh, okay, then you need to second.
I need to second, so, okay, so I'll, I will second, and then, since we just require a majority of all.
It needs at least three to vote in favor.
Okay, that was what I thought.
And I think Brad has a question, I could probably answer it.
Yeah.
Just because you weren't there doesn't mean you can't vote on it. You can vote in reliance upon those that were there, comfortable in doing that.
Okay.
Um, there's a motion, there's a second. Uh, can we vote by roll call, please, Deb?
Laura Flurry?
Yes.
Brad Goedecker?
Yes.
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Passes four to zero. Minutes for October tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Minutes, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. Pretty, pretty short, into the point. Is there any motions?
Yeah, I'm going to approve.
That was the trailer, right, or the?
Mm-hmm.
Trailer?
Uh, is there a second?
Second it.
Vote by acclamation, please. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, ayes have it now. Voucher packet, eleven fourteen twenty-three. I didn't have anything on this one. I hope anybody does, or someone has a motion.
I do not have any questions.
I'll make a motion to approve voucher packet eleven fourteen twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, vote by acclamation, please. All those in favor of approving voucher packet eleven fourteen twenty-three, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, right, hearing none, motion passes. Uh, financials.
So our current balance, general fund, is a hundred forty-one thousand, four hundred thirteen dollars and twelve cents. We'll get our December settlement next month. Water operating balance is four hundred eleven thousand, eight hundred two dollars and ninety-seven cents. Sewer operating balance is six hundred seven hundred, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-two cents. Water improvement, five hundred forty-three thousand, six hundred sixty-two dollars and thirteen cents. And sewer improvement, two hundred eleven thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars and one cent, so that's up to here. Um, I'm going to pass you the water and the sewer estimated budget. So you have a brilliant idea.
Deb, can I ask, what's the local road and bridge matching grant? Um, is that, uh, here at Bossing?
The local road and bridge is, um, the fund that we had to create, uh, by the IC code from SBOA. Bossing's money comes in, it has to go into that fund, and then these we are going to use as our portion, has to go into that fund, and has to show everything coming out of that to pay for it.
Okay.
Good.
I don't agree, I want an extra.
I got one, though.
Dave's not here.
Um, that's pretty much all.
Okay. Any questions before we move on? Uh, old business. Ordinance twenty twenty-three fourteen, authorization to join the Central Indiana Regional Development Authority. Uh, second meeting, um, we went through this in some detail at the last meeting, as I recall. This basically allowed us to pursue that grant. Anyone have any, um, further discussion or any motions?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fourteen.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, please, Deb.
Laura Flurry?
Yes.
Brad Goedecker?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fourteen passes four to zero.
Um, next we have resolution twenty twenty-three seventeen, which is the one we just voted on. Creating a strategic development plan. Once again, to obtain access to that grant money. Um, is there any motions?
I'll do a twelve point twenty-three second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, please.
Laura Flurry?
Yes.
Brad Goedecker? Richard Hill?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash seventeen passes four to zero.
Ordinance, uh, new business, ordinance twenty twenty-three fifteen, which is our twenty twenty-three budget reduction. Someone could give us a quick rundown of, um, how this numbers came out?
Uh, so when we do our budgets, the DLGF always asks or inquires if we're going to use all of our funds. Because then that tells them, there's nothing to start with, you know, um, like we have less money. So what we do is we take whatever we know we're not going to use. And, um, so like Parks and Rec has, I think, thirteen thousand, so we say we're only going to, we're going to not use eight thousand. Same with CCI, cum cap improvements and CCD. I think we had a hundred fifty thousand budget for CCD, and we were going to say forty thousand of it we're not spending. So that just helps our budget to prove, to pass for the next year. So we're reducing those funds to show we didn't spend that.
This is just accounting to show we didn't spend all the money that we budgeted?
It just looks better to the DLGF.
Yep.
So is there, is there money in that bucket of?
These all have money.
But you're taking it out by this, by the?
Saying we're not going to spend it, so we know we're not starting at ground zero.
Okay.
I don't know if you have any.
Has to do with how the DLGF calculates and approves your budget. And if they, they assume that you're going to spend everything you already appropriated for this year. So if you don't have the money there, they won't approve your appropriation that you want for next year without making this reduction.
Okay.
Do we do this every year?
Um, any motions as regards ordinance twenty twenty-three fifteen?
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifteen.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Vote by roll call, please.
Laura Flurry?
Yes.
Brad Goedecker?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifteen passes four to zero. First reading.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three sixteen, um.
Before you move on, is there any benefit of trying to expedite this?
Like to suspend the rules and pass it tonight because we have to upload it to Gateway.
Can we with a mission number?
Yes, as long as it's unanimous and you get the four.
Okay.
All, and basically it has to be unanimous approval to suspend the rules and unanimous voting approving it.
Yes. Okay. Is there a motion to suspend the rules as regards ordinance twenty twenty-three fifteen?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules regarding ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifteen.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Vote by roll call, please, Deb.
Laura Flurry?
Yes.
Brad Goedecker?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rules passes four to zero.
All right, is there a motion to give final approval or not to twenty twenty-three fifteen?
I'll make a motion to give final approval to ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifteen.
Is there a second?
Just a second.
Uh, vote by roll call, please, Deb.
Flurry?
Yes.
Brad Goedecker?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifteen, budget reduction passes four to zero.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three sixteen, uh, clarifying the application of insufficient funds charges to include, um, declined electronic transactions. Someone wants to give us an introduction on this, or?
Oh, sorry. Yes, um, before I left, this was something that was on my list of things to do. Um, our old ordinance does only specify NSF for checks. And now in this day and age, we get, um, credit card payments, we get ACH withdrawals or payments. So we really need to include everything for the NSF, not just checks.
And I guess my only question was on page two of four. The two-day notice to whoever's payment hasn't gone through. Would it make sense to make that more like maybe five days so that we're not doing meaningless shut-off and rehooks?
Well, no, what we do is we hang a notice that they have an NSF.
Yep.
Then we let, give them, well, three days to pay for the NSF. And then we'll hang a, hang a disconnect notice, so they get more than.
Okay, well, um, I guess what the ordinance says here is that we just give them two days. They have two days and then we shut it off.
Is that what the old ordinance said?
Uh, it looks like it.
And when I was reviewing this, I struggled a little bit with it, too, Joe. Ultimately, I concluded that the way it appears to have been intended and applied is that they don't actually shut it off after the two days. It just kicks it into another procedure. It gives them another notice, like the standard notice, of disconnect. And then at the end of that separate notice or second notice, then the physical disconnection actually occurred.
Okay.
Is that accurate, Debbie, or?
I had a question on page three of four, so insufficient funds fee of thirty-five dollars. Is there any additional fees or charges or anything like that on, if they pay, if they miss electronic, Lee, or anything from the bank that would
No.
come back and charge us?
Yeah, they're not charged anything but the thirty-five.
But does the, if it?
Their bank will charge them, probably.
But nobody else is charging us, so the thirty-five dollars covers all our expenses?
Because as of right now, I have no fee, but I don't know when that's ever going to, you know, it could be implemented at any moment. I just got that because I switched banks for the moment. So I don't know if that's ever, it's a time limit or anything. As you know, it costs us to send somebody else, and to make those hang tags, and it takes a lot of time.
I just wanted to make sure we were covering all our expenses and costs if implement, implementing this.
If, if the bank starts charging us, um, or charging us whatever, um, then we will have to adjust this if it's not sufficient. It should be sufficient, but I don't know how much.
I don't know if the bank can charge us, somebody else will EFT us.
They can charge, um, my, our last bank was ten bucks, ten dollars for an NSF check.
Oh, for a check, okay.
Right.
But I'm, but I'm talking about EFTs.
Well, I, I don't think they charge us right now, do they? Oh, yeah, okay, invoice cloud charges us ten dollars.
So in, so in relation to that, the thirty-five dollars needs to include any other fees that are associated with this? So is that language in here that covers the town for those additional fees?
Well, the thirty-five covers that fee.
Okay.
We're allowing the thirty-five to cover that fee.
And it, thirty-five applies to any failed payments, and failed payments is defined to include.
So even what, what she just made mention of the ten dollars, the thirty-five would cover that, anything else? Okay.
Any motions as regards ordinance twenty twenty-three sixteen?
I'd be kind of shout out, uh, I moved to approve twenty twenty-three dash sixteen.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Three, sixteen, or since there's red line, it has.
Yeah, there. Uh, uh, let me explain. What I have gone to doing is when we're adopting a resolution, or excuse me, an ordinance that revises an existing town code provision, make it real easy for everyone to understand what's being amended and what previously existed and so forth. I've taken the approach similar to what the state legislature does. If you look at a bill that they have, it shows red line before and after all that. And I thought if it's good enough for the state legislature, it's good enough for us. And what happens is ultimately, this will be the version that you sign, it will be in red line. It's clear to everybody for, for Trudy. And it'll be clear to the, uh, code publisher that we use on the, you know, for the website version, what they need to be doing. And so.
I just didn't know if we had this stated, approving the revised current ordinance, or it's a brand new?
All you have to do is refer to this ordinance number, and it includes all that.
That's a good catch, though.
Can't remember if we had a motion.
Brad has a motion.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Um, vote by roll call, please, Deb.
Laura Flurry?
Yes.
Brad Goedecker?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixteen passes four to zero first reading.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three seventeen, which is our twenty twenty-four salary ordinance.
So this, this year, the salary ordinance was a little different, and provided a notice that kind of explained that the rawness of the people that's included in the ordinance. Pretty much, um, what we are looking at, um, as a, we're requesting a two thousand dollar raise for each position. There are a few positions that are a little bit, um, different than the, the flat two thousand across the board, um, which I've outlined in that memo. So I think that the question we're in a, or, uh, the question on the, um, protection of the salaries.
Um, I just have a question on the table on the last page. Random. I lost it here. There it is. Um, there's asterisks, um, looks like utility clerk. And, um, or. Okay.
Um, the title of table elected officials, and yes, I do not, um, comments, it's part of those asterisks.
Okay.
It was one I copied it from, this is the way that we had done our ordinance, that it, before our position, it had asterisks.
Oh, okay. And then, so is the utility clerk and the clerk treasurer, are those the same?
No.
No, okay.
Utility clerks in the, uh, utility office.
Oh, okay. Pardon me? Oh, yep. Okay. I, I didn't have any other questions.
The finance office, HR, is that an anticipated?
No, there isn't, I'm looking there.
So there is an?
Part-time.
There's a part-time HR person?
I'd like to eventually move it to full-time, but we just haven't had a chance to do that yet. I mean, there's not a lot, we don't have enough employees to really move, make enough there, but.
HR person that's regularly.
So in the ordinance itself, with the, with the part-time positions, you put their hourly rate. If they are full-time salary or, you know, went non-exempt, then it had, or, or exempt, it has their annual, and then a bi-weekward pay as well. So that was where it was a little different. Last year, we kind of put like, what the total payout for the year would, the max payout. And with our hourly folks, we really need to spell out what their hourly rate is. That's why we got.
And on the, uh, creation of the building commissioner position, can you keep that a little bit?
Yes, so.
What that realization sort of looks like?
Yes, so that would be my previous position, um, as well as his role, or still kind of explaining what that role would be. But it would be part of my position or the majority of what I was doing as far as the legal plan, issue, and these, um, those boards. Um, as well as, um, he will be, uh, still be a, a building inspector, um, as well. So, and the intent is to take those inspections and have the building commissioner be that, um, in charge of the commercial and industrial. So they kind of have a specialty, but they would still be backup on the residential side. And then have that, um, building inspector be primarily the residential inspector, um, and then backup when the building commissioner is out. Building commissioner issues the permits, signs the certificates of occupancies. Um, and my role was kind of, uh, evolved. They had me signing C OOs, and I didn't find that that was the right thing to do because I'm not the one making the, doing the inspections. And I'm getting a signature on something that I've not set my eyes on. And so just as we kind of evolve, um, as we grow, um, right now, our backup inspector is our MS four coordinator, our storm, our MS four coordinator in code enforcement. So really get somebody that is currently in building inspection, um, and that. So that was kind of what we're, what we're proposing.
Okay.
So coming with that, with the building commissioner, the, the new position, so that would be effective January one, to create that new entity program?
I mean, that's, we haven't really talked about, like, we, we have a plan, but we'd like to, we haven't announced any kind of, if it's a promotion, or if it's a, a higher, new higher order, post, or that kind of thing, so.
Okay.
Any further discussion or motions on the salary ordinance?
The council have any reservations or seen in line with what your expectations were?
I, I don't really have any, uh, significant concerns with any budget. Looks like the, uh, um, raises are fairly uniform, which I, I like, that it's not just a strict percentage, and the ones that are outliers, if it's uniform, they make sense to me.
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash seven.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, vote by roll call, please, Deb.
Laura Flurry?
Yes.
Brad Goedecker?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three seventeen passes four to zero first reading.
Next item of business is engagement agreement with 3D Financial Group, uh, for the rate studies for our three-year.
So one, uh, one item, the stormwater, technically, that should have gone to the storm on the board, uh, what they did, um, the last week. So tonight, uh, just asking, uh, for approval, we're almost done with pending legal counsel. He's provided some feedback, he's given that to Reed, and they've obliged to, um, follow suit with what Stephen had proposed as far as changes. And we haven't been able to connect with Stephen. I think it was over desperate today or something.
And actually, I.
There was the one on water.
I've, I reviewed what you forwarded yesterday, I believe, and I found those to be acceptable. There was one minor change that they didn't make, but it was not significant in my determination.
So what we are asking for is to study our current rates across the board on our utilities. Um, it's been twenty years since we've looked at sewers. It's been at least ten years since we've looked at water.
Thirteen.
Thirteen, I thought it was like two hundred.
Oh, you're right, two hundred.
So it's not that, it's just to kind of, it's good practice to reassess those every few years. And just kind of see where we're at, where do we need to be, are we, are we too high, are we too low, or is, you know, what's coming up as far as large projects? And, and so we're asking, um, for approval to engage with 3D Financial Group to provide us with that rate study. Um, specifically on the sewer, that will assist us, um, as we look to submit for the, um, the preliminary engineering report next year. um, as we look to submit for the, um, the preliminary engineering report next year. And then we started on with, um, an engineering firm, and we decided to pull back after the summer. And it's, um, and it's struggling through, and we've done some efforts, and then the board, um, wanted to submit that until we can have a, a human scrub and get it right this time. So on the sewer, that's, that's the main focus on the water. Um, we still don't know what Indiana American Water, what are the rate case that we have against them? How that would go and what that, uh, so we just want to be prepared, um, and looking at all of our options. So just asking for permission to go through, to sign that, and then work on the, on the legal.
Carmen, traditionally, what, what is the length of time that most municipalities do studies such as this?
Every three years, three to five years.
And you, and I, I apologize, I was writing something down, but you said twenty years was the last time we did something for what?
On the sewer.
And thirteen was for what?
Ten, ten on the water. I don't know off the top of my head on the storm water, when the last time we reviewed.
So is this something that we're gonna kind of maybe put on the agenda for review, or at least communication, you know, socializing it?
Right.
Of possible studies, like every five years, so we get this in compliance? Okay.
Any further discussion or motions?
Perhaps I just, my ears are clogged here. I see, I mean, is there an estimate on, um, how long, or how long and total cost of the project for them to study this is? I see like some hourly rates and.
There is, like, um, each three of the sewers, which is a total cost of a fixed cost of fifteen thousand. And then, it's the same for the water, some gate could be, but they do outline their hourly rate. Stormwater, yeah, this stormwater was, um, vast, long water, to look at various, um, options that are a little bit more in detail. And then again, with the sewer, we're looking at our big project that we're looking at, proposing to the, as well.
Combine thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for them to provide us some guidance.
So what will be the next step?
Uh, they advise us to consider doing a certain thing.
So if, if we have, they'll look at what our current rates are, and how that's, that's working for us, or how it's not working for us, and we'll talk to them with them about, with those projects that we've lost. You know, let's, let's say, in the sewer project, the first estimate had, um, twenty-five million dollars. Um, so they would kind of look at that, look at the projects that we're doing. Um, but then they would say, okay, how do we, I'll just use to spread the risk. We can't put all of that on the residents. So what are the ways that we can kind of spread the, the cost of, of a project? Or, um, well, that's the main thing is the project. Some of it is just working on, um, the utility customers, um, some of that can be bonding. So, you know, we take out a bond, um, you know, grants, are there grants available that, that can maybe offset some of the costs as well? Um, and how do we compare with other municipalities as well? So it kind of takes a full kind of holistic approach to whether you're charging, what should you be charging, to be able to provide the services that you're doing, and then to improve the infrastructure too.
Thanks.
And, and I would just add, ultimately, I would expect that they would provide a proposed new rate schedule that would be consistent with their analysis, what we need to have, you know, the appropriate level of funding for our utilities.
You say they do, or we should suggest that?
No, no, they will. And that's.
Based on projects and what we're looking at, so forth, they would.
Right, based on the crunching of the numbers.
Okay.
I've worked in with Reed on a couple of different, financially, you know, they're helping in the clerk's office with some various accounting, uh, procedural things, and. They've helped, they've helped a lot with, with just kind of getting us in line, um, on some of our finances.
Did we get a discount, since they're already doing workforce?
Worked it in the next round. All about asking for the town to give us a two for one deal.
Mark outs for ones. Agreed to these.
They have agreed to those that there, earlier, there was one word that they, um, did not take out. I suspect it was oversight, or it could have been intentional, uh, that I concluded was, was not, um, not significant enough to make an insurance.
I'm gonna make a motion to. Except. To authorize, uh, Mrs. Yank to, uh, enter into these agreements.
It's a motion to authorize the town, uh, through its, uh.
Director of Administration.
Director of Administration to, um, enter into these engagement agreements with three D Financial. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Move by roll call, please, Deb.
Laura Flory?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Yes.
Engagement agreements passes four to zero.
Next item is, uh, contract with Clever Dog Media for website development. I, I have a promotional brochure, but I don't believe I have a copy of any contract.
Well, I'm not sure what you see, but I'll just note that they provided a proposal, uh, it was approximately, how, five or six pages long, and they had, was that the same thing or not? You can pass that down to everyone. I did not have time to attach a formal professional services agreement, um, but it, it does spell out what their services would be and what their charge would be. I don't remember offhand what that charge was, but, um, I would suggest if you want to move forward, you know, consistent with their proposal, that you authorize the administration to work with me, finalize a, a full professional services agreement, consistent.
So it looks like five thousand to build the website and a hundred and ten a month to ma- maintain and manage it.
So right now, our site is on a WordPress site, um, which, not saying that it's, it's functioning, but on the backend, it's very convoluted, and there's a lot of apps we have to get loaded, and you have to pay for all these different apps. Um, the biggest thing that's, that, after I met with some of the clever dogs, um, the biggest issue that we're having now is bandwidth, um, to, you know, on the shared server, um, that. One, that potentially poses some risk, um, being on a shared site. But with us uploading our meetings on there, as far as the YouTube, or the, the videos and things like that, we're exceeding our bandwidth, and this other, this company is telling us we need to boot up rapid search, um, which would be an exorbitant cost that I don't think is necessary. And after talking with, um, for Clever Dogs, he's got to work around with you. He's a local vendor, he, he works on a lot of the sites that's in that proposal. Um, the other thing is, is that we attempted to do an ongoing monthly update meeting with Excedian, who is currently, he's helping build the site that we have now, um, wasn't being responsive, timely, so things like that. Um, again, Jeff, I, I feel like for a hundred and ten dollars a month for him to make sure he would upload all of our minutes and, and all of that, whatever we still choose. My biggest frustration when, when we get a new site, as soon as you get a new site, it's already outdated. Um, so making sure that we're staying responsive and keeping our website up to date. Are there things that we're not doing, or we get so busy doing other things that we're not, um, we're not getting it uploaded in a timely fashion, and where we could just send it to him, but these people will be able to, um, get it. The biggest issue is the bandwidth, I feel like he's got to.
We have like four plugins that we have to pay every year on top of him.
So how long, I mean, what's the length of the contract you're gonna engage into? Hundred and ten dollars a month for how long?
Um, I don't remember if there was like an.
I think it's just indefinitely at the will of the parties, was my quick and dirty read of it.
Yep.
So we can leave, we can terminate it.
Terminate it anytime with no.
Other party can terminate it anytime from this, I think.
Would, would they still use the, I, I know, could we just had this kind of updated a couple of years ago? Okay, so will they still use kind of the same concept that we have? Or are they just gonna do, redo the whole thing?
As far as like the look of the.
The look of the, yeah, and all that.
Or we can modify it. I mean, the pictures that we put out there were taken in two thousand eighteen or nineteen, and so we're getting new content and making sure we can, you know, stay up to date on things.
Okay.
We've had a lot of changes since that website was created, there was an intent there, and then nothing ever, there was a lot of opportunity there to use our website a little bit better for marketing and educating and providing information to residents.
Just uploading our audio for.
Right, that's walking down our system.
Our meeting.
So we need to, like, authorize Carmen to engage in this? Is that what we're looking for, or?
I, I would say to authorize Carmen and the town attorney to, the town attorney to draft or, or review a contract and authorize Carmen to enter it, subject to that legal review.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to, um, do as you just kind of outlined, uh, allow Mr. Watson to do a legal review, and the Director of Administration, opportunity to enter into the agreement, uh, as they say.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Can we vote by roll call, please, Deb?
Laura Flory?
Yes.
Greg Goedecker? Richard Hill?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Contract approval authorization, Carmen and town attorney passes four to zero.
Next on the agenda is, Lynn Gray. I don't think I got anything.
You have anything?
Okay.
So, um, Lynn Gray, so, let me, let me back up. Stephen and his firm do such a great job, and they work with a lot of clients where we have conflicts, um, because they represent those parties. And so in order for us to kind of not pull up the process, um, we'd like to, um, contract with Lynn Gray. She's a, an attorney in the Franklin area, she represents the city of Franklin, which obviously there's, there would be a conflict if we, we do business with Franklin, but obviously Stephen would be primary. Um, but when we run into these instances, we don't have to hold up the process as far as how we gotta engage her. Again, I would like to have you guys consider, um, adding Lynn Gray as a contract attorney for times when Williams Farrelly-Lockowski can't represent us. Um, her fee is two hundred and fifty dollars per hour, um, which is a little bit more than what Stevens is. Um, she had sent me a sample, um, for, uh, how she represents Greenwood on some things on a contract basis. Um, but it wasn't specific to, to Whiteland, so I didn't provide you guys with a copy, but, um, I could certainly get you a copy or have her, you know, actually make it to the town of Whiteland. Um, and I guess my request would be that in the instances when Stephen and Williams Farrelly-Lockowski can't represent us, that we can go ahead and engage where to, um, be our legal counsel. So, it's.
And in the context that this came up in, if it's okay for me to share.
Yeah.
Um, is a proposed roundabout interlocal agreement at the intersection of Whiteland Road and Sawmill Road, which would involve three different municipalities. Well, Johnson County is, it's not a municipality, but in any event, a governmental entity. Johnson County is, uh, a client of ours, as you know, and New Whiteland is another entity that would be involved with that, and then of course Whiteland. So that was what brought this up.
And then there was another instance where we have an engineering firm that we would like to do business with, that his firm represents as well. So again, we, we, as I said, they do a really good job, so, very popular.
I mean, two fifty is basically the going rate on civil work these days. That's, I think you guys give us a little bit of a discount, because we give you a lot of business.
Right, yeah.
But on a conflict basis, I wouldn't expect that.
My general rate is a lot higher than what we charge you, and a lot higher than two fifty.
So if you guys are, I mean, obviously, you, you guys make the, the decision, but I can, if you are wanting me to, and, um, have her draft it specifically for us, um, for those purposes, and then make sure you all get to see that before we would sign anything.
And I'll just add too, that we, I recommended that Lynn Gray be the one that was, uh, used. We have, uh, recommended her in other situations, have worked with her on other projects, and, and we have a lot of confidence in her and her abilities. She has a good reputation as well.
And I, I, Lynn's a very good attorney. I'm probably gonna abstain, just to avoid any potential conflicts down the road on, on things, on, on voting on this, but Lynn's a fine attorney.
So she would provide you, uh, like a, a, a quote, or what she would provide, and then you're gonna review it?
It would be a letter agreement or engagement agreement.
Okay.
For her to provide the town with legal services on a as-needed basis.
And then he would check it to make sure it's okay, or we're just gonna?
I, I could do that, yeah.
Yes. So Stephen reviewing the agreement with another attorney.
So if, if we want to.
Do it for bond counsel, so.
We want to, um, if we want to approve the town administrator to, or the Director of Administration to, um, enter into an engagement subject to review by our current council. We can do that tonight, or we can wait. Um, I, I, it's gonna be the standard form engagement letter. I, I don't know that us looking at it is particularly necessary, but if we want to, we can.
I mean, I don't, I don't see a reason to wait, so, um, I'll, I'll make a motion to, uh, authorize Director of Administration and Town Attorney to, uh, review and approve the agreement as they see fit.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Vote by roll call, please, Deb.
Laura Flory?
Yes.
Greg Goedecker?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Good stand.
Passes three to zero to one, um, approving the, uh, Director of Administration with the, uh, attorney, subject to attorney's review, on, uh, legal services with Lynn Gray.
Next on our agenda is settlement agreement. The town attorney emailed this out, or at least we, yeah. I'm going to make a motion to authorize the Director of Administration to enter into a settlement agreement consistent with the settlement reached in mediation and the information previously shared with council members. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Vote by rule call, please, Deb.
Laura Flory?
Yes.
Raggo Decker?
No.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Passes three to one. Raggo Decker?
No.
Next item of business is CF-1 compliance for Cooper Tire over in the Moore.
And I'll just summarize that this was, you may remember, we did a batch of CF-1s, some of those that have had a payment now, and this should have been included in it, but it got missed and I apologize for that. But the county has requested a signed CF-1 from the town so that they can have it in their books and be able to process it appropriately. And so I provide you with their CF-1. They are in compliance with what they estimated in their benefits and so I would recommend finding them in compliance.
Then I move to accept the CF-1 form.
And by that you mean to find it in substantial compliance or? It's a motion to accept and find substantial compliance. Is there a second?
Second.
Vote by affirmation, please. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All ayes have it.
Thank you. Joe, before you move on, I might move back to one of our ordinances, the one on the EFT check fee.
Yes.
Just wanted to point out that that only passed first reading. If you want it to go into effect, you know, after tonight's meeting, you would need to suspend rules and so forth, but just wanted to make sure everyone understood the procedure legally.
What is the council's pleasure on that?
I think you probably ought to go ahead and enact it instead of just waiting a month for no reason.
Okay.
That way it's, so I'll, I'll move to suspend the rules to allow for vote. Specific agreement.
That was ordinance twenty twenty-three dash sixteen.
Okay.
Twenty-three sixteen.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Vote by rule call, please, Deb.
Yes.
Raggo Decker?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Joe Saylor? Yes.
Ordnance twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, suspend the rules, passes four to zero.
Is there a motion to, as regards final approval of twenty twenty-three sixteen?
I'll move to approve final reading, twenty twenty-three sixteen.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Vote by rule call, please, Deb.
Laura Flory?
Yes.
Raggo Decker?
Yes.
Richard Hill?
Yes.
Joe Saylor?
Yes.
Ordnance twenty twenty-three dash sixteen for second reading, passes four to zero.
And am I correct, council, that since that imposes a penalty, that that is not effective until publication?
I want to read the specifics. I'm not sure that that, we can publish it, it's not terribly long, but it's a fee, which I would distinguish between a fee and a penalty. Probably the safe thing to do is go ahead and publish it, but.
You mean codification or newspaper or?
I think it's just codification, right?
Well, I don't know how quickly you can get it into, basically up in the, on the website version of the code. How long and is there?
On the website?
Yes.
Either the ALP or whoever we have published.
Oh, you mean American Legal?
Right.
I can send it tomorrow.
And they charge and how quickly do they turn that around?
Well, I usually send everything at once at the end of the year.
Right, that's why I'm asking. Because if we just have the Daily Journal publish it, it goes into effect and they charge us whatever their charge is.
It's going to be over a thousand to send out everything in.
Well, but that's going to be more than just the cost of the one ordinance.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, everything we've done for the year.
But if you did it as a one-off, it sounds like that's not your normal and I'm not sure that this one deserves special treatment.
We just want to put it in the paper or do we want to wait till the end of the year?
I, it's your call.
We can put it in the paper, that's no problem.
But just don't collect it until that's happened.
Okay.
All right, that one's done. Director of Administration and Director of Operation Reports.
I've got an update on the project. They had sent us a letter in regards to Phase One, that was projected to be finished by the end of this year. And they've run into a conflict with some of the utility companies getting their quotes moved. And so they just wanted to provide us with an update on their Phase One project agreement and that they're still planning to get that done. But again, they called for it to be done by the end of twenty twenty-three. And so just wanted to provide you with that update and I believe Stephen has, is in their contract or in the agreement, it talks about force measure and they just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of it, but I believe Stephen felt that it really wasn't a big.
Yeah, because.
Big of a concern as what they were.
Right, because under the agreement, they have until the end of twenty twenty-four to complete it.
Yeah. Well, and you know, there's the almighty and there's the railroads and there's public utilities.
So if you happen to drive out on Grand Road and see a utility pole in the middle of an entrance, you have to wait for them to move it. So just an update on that. And then post tornado when the cell tower was damaged, the cell tower is actually on town that is land property. And so they had asked for an entry, things that we had to, are entered into with them. They are finished with getting all of the carriers back from the town. And they completed that prior to their expected temporary use agreement. And so they've just provided us with their termination of, a notice of early termination.
I believe there were either three or four and we received their early termination notice from AT&amp;T.
Yes.
So there presumably are some others that are still using the temporary space. Is that right?
Okay. They get called all different events because there was a singular AT&amp;T. I'll double check and make sure that the others, I believe, they're probably, I think they're all done, but I have not received other early termination release though. So this one's from AT&amp;T, a singular wireless, ECS. I don't know what their name is going to be next year. Just an update on that. And then just a couple of other quick updates regarding the tornado and buildings that we would like to go ahead and make some temporary repairs so we can use the remainder of the existing buildings. We had received an engagement letter with Envoy to potentially use them for the, I'll say construction, but it's a temporary construction, it's not to rebuild the whole facility. But we would plan to use insurance proceeds. And it was recommended when I sent the agreement to Stephen, one, I've asked Envoy to break it out a little bit better because they just knew everything, one agreement might just match that. But Stephen made mention, even though it's using insurance proceeds, to see what the desire of the council is, do you still want us to get quotes on the repairs? So on the fire department, we're looking to build a more, a solid wall to separate the damage from the non-damaged portions so we can still use the bays, heat them, provide electricity utilities to that section of the fire department. And then with the street collars, we've got some more, there's some work that we want to get done so that they can use the bays that are still standing through the winter until we decide what the permanent kind of solution will be for both of those buildings. So I don't have an estimate of what they had, that was the other thing, is that their scope of work just mentioned powerally and so we need to have a little bit more firm numbers from them, but is the desire of the council for us to receive bids on this or what, what are your thoughts?
Well, I think, what, over fifty thousand, under two hundred and fifty thousand, we have to get quotes, over two hundred and fifty thousand, we have to get bids.
Through the public work statute, but using insurance proceeds, we don't necessarily have to, correct?
I think that's correct. I can double check that, but I think that's.
But we also don't want to deplete the insurance proceeds on just temporary repairs. So we want to be smart about it.
I would be, personally would be more comfortable if we pulled three quotes.
Okay.
That's just me, I don't know what the council feels.
I think you, I think you have quotes in a small scope of work. That way you're bidding apples to apples.
So we will do that and have those for next law screening. So, and then another thing with, as we've kind of, as I've moved into my new role, just trying to look at how do we streamline, how do we, where are we, where are we at with some different internal controls and policies? And one thing that did pop up that I think we need to kind of take a look at is our purchase policy. As of right now, the purchasing agency is the council and the purchasing agent right now is the town manager. When you all split the role of town manager, that was identified as any time the town manager is mentioned in the code, it is referenced as the Director of Administration or the Director of Operations. Back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, you all brought the police chief as a direct report to the council. So I would like to kind of look at the purchasing policy and the agents. We can add more than just the town manager and police chief, but we really need to kind of start looking at that and making sure that when items are looking to be purchased, are they being purchased by the appropriate party that's been approved to make purchases on behalf of the purchasing agency, which is you all. And then that kind of dovetails with, again, up to fifty thousand is kind of what the state statute says, but each jurisdiction can set different parameters on what the purchasing agency would like to see in front of them for approval prior to purchase. So I'm just kind of, while we're looking at this ordinance, if it makes sense for us to add additional purchasing agents, if it makes sense for us to add any other criteria of what the council would like to approve as the purchasing agency prior to purchase, just would like to kind of get your guys' thoughts as we kind of scrub through the ordinance in brief before you.
And Stephen, is there, I mean, I don't think that anybody bought us or another board can be the first purchasing agent, correct? Purchasing, I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, the purchasing agency has to be a governmental board, right?
Right, but.
And then the.
It's an individual point on agents.
An agent, yes. And when we do appoint an agent, am I correct that even if it is a small purchase, if it's not something already appropriated in the budget that we have to approve it? Or am I conflating two things there?
If it's a small purchase and it's not, not covered by an appropriation, yes, you would definitely have to approve it, particularly, but if it's not appropriated for, then you'd have to have an appropriation approved. Or it would have to come out of sewer or water funds or a utility fund.
Which don't require.
Which don't require appropriation.
Okay, and then, so can we delegate to a purchasing agent the authority to make purchases up to a certain amount without purchasing agency approval?
Yes.
Yes, and is that up to fifty thousand or is it up to whatever we say or?
It's whatever you say, I wouldn't go too high.
Yeah, 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 okay, okay.
And obviously it's going to be capped by whatever the appropriation is too.
And this has been an ongoing kind of conversation, like I know we've talked with previous town managers, this has come up as far as the limit or, you know, things of that nature. I guess my, you know, I'll come to you all even if I look to dispose of property or if I would like to acquire that property, when I call property, I mean assets or something that isn't already within the contract that you all have approved, you know, such as engineering and financial consultant, kind of fees, things of that nature. So I guess not that we want to have to come to you to ask to buy a pair of boots, you know, or a certain, you know, five hundred dollars or something of that nature, but if this is the time, if we're going to look at the ordinance to kind of, you know, it may be approved in a budget, but is it truly itemized in a budget for that purchase or is it kind of a, it's in my budget, I can, you know, purchase, you know, pick on boots again, you know, I'd feel good.
Normally we don't move the appropriation for anything with capital outlay.
Mm-hmm.
We plan that in the budget for the next year. We know we're going to be getting something as a capital outlay, so that's.
But even, even if you have a budget approved, you still, you still should have a checks and balance in place of some sort of authorization. I mean, for instance, at LabCorp where I work, I mean, we approve capital outlays all the time in the budget, but we still go through a CEV process that does a checks and balance and everybody's watching everybody's bucket of money and make sure it's approved. So are you saying we do or don't do that or wanting to institute that or what do we?
I'm just posing the question of what would you like to see? If you're okay with the way that we've been doing things, you know, you tell us what you would like to see. Because you are the authorizing agency to, for purchases. When you approve them in the voucher packet, so that's kind of your blessing if there's something that's, you know, bought stuff on Amazon, you know, something like that. Again, not to nickel and dime everything.
Yeah, I don't think the role up here is to micromanage by the big asset purchases. I would like to see a heads up, I guess.
What, do we have a small purchase cap right now? Do you, do you know?
Well.
We have our small purchase policy, I should say.
I think we have a small purchase policy, but that's different than I think what we're really discussing here, which is.
Yes.
What is the level of authority that our employees have for purchases? My understanding is that there is not anything that's expressed in writing that says anything under a certain dollar amount, you're authorized to purchase if it's within appropriated, you know, and so forth. And I would recommend that clarified what, what authorization has been given or is desired to be given to your, your staff in regard.
I mean, it was like several years ago when we switched from budget to fund in our accounting thing, I made sure it was okay if the accounts to upgrade to, a software system was going to cost us fifteen thousand dollars.
Is our small, small purchase policy at fifty thousand at the statutory cap or?
I believe so.
The old ones.
Yeah, I believe so.
We're at the statutory cap, okay. Sorry, you were saying something, Richard, my apologies.
Well, I was just going to say, didn't we, didn't we already kind of give Carmen a fifty thousand dollar leeway on that trailer? Is that?
Well, I mean, we approved that.
But that was. But that was on a one, one time item.
Okay. We're just talking in general all the time, not specific to that private.
Well, let me ask you this, Carmen. What do you and Slim think is a reasonable level where you're not going to have to be before us asking about everything, but it gives you peace of mind as far as?
I think for, for me, it's not necessarily an amount. I mean, obviously no more than the 50, but for me, if it's an asset that the town then has additional expenses that go along with that. So if I purchase a, I purchase a desk, I mean, the desk after, you know, so many times like that, after so many years, that's going to depreciate. It's not worth anything. But if I'm purchasing brand new TVs for the whole town, you know, for whatever reason, that's just, I'm just picking it because I'm looking at it. You know, obviously I think something like that expense, I, I think that should come before the town. This is my opinion.
So did the, the excavator, the truck and the trailer, I can't, did all that come before us? Because that seemed like that was a big ticket item.
Those are in the GO bond. Those are pre-approved.
And, and whatever, like the fire department had a purchase, the police department had purchases and they were all outlined what those purchases were. So even if, even if we have money appropriated in our budget, I guess if you have specific items that are of significant value, whatever, $10,000, let's say, just throwing that number out there that, you know, we would need to come to you all just to authorize the purchase to make sure that that's, okay. I'm just throwing out 10 cents, whatever you guys said.
By no means do we want to micromanage and have every expenditure come before us to get a rubber stamp. I think that's wasteful, but.
I was thinking ballpark of $20,000 or, you know, anything that any department had or purchasing agent wants to bring before us, obviously we would consider. That was kind of the number that popped into my head, but that's just, it's kind of my thought. I don't know where everybody else is. And I don't know if we want to take some time to think about it. I don't think we have to make a decision on it right now.
So you're proposing anything that's $20,000 and above and, and potentially a, an asset that would be depreciative would, would?
Oh, I was just going to say 20,000 because I mean, you, if you get into depreciable assets and whatnot, you've muddied this vastly more than we clarified.
Our materiality threshold is 5,000. So anything over 5,000 is supposed to be an asset.
Do we want to do anything on this tonight or do we want to think about it?
Say, think about it?
Think about it.
Yeah, I would, I guess I would say, hey, like come, come back to us with like the specific plan. Okay, here's exactly what I think is best for us and then we can just, we can approve what makes sense for you.
And I've pulled like ordinances from around the Johnson County area. We'll do that. Another update, just real quick on the fire department. When we were going through the budgeting process, we discussed coming up with creative ways to continue to fund the fire department either by, you know, three year growth appeals. Is there an opportunity for us to reset the levy and then to help us generate additional revenue for the fire department? We met with Representative Michelle Davis last week, Chief Officer, and myself and Ed. In there, I can't remember. Yeah, she was in there. Just to kind of see if there was any legislation at the state level. So when the fire department came underneath the town, that was an opportunity for us to reset the levy. And at that time, the town decided not to do that. Where we have, we collect five cents, Eric, is that right? Where other fire departments collect closer to 30 cents on the dollar. And so we're really, that was, that was fine maybe as a volunteer fire department. But as we look to grow and the number of runs and the types of runs that we are getting, we need to really look at, even up areas to further fund our fire department. We also are, may not have mentioned this before, but we met with a specific attorney, Jeff Douglas, that has been very in tune with different mergers, with townships and districts and things of that nature across the state of Indiana. And he has some very good relationships with the DLGF. Again, just to kind of, are there opportunities for us to look at some different levies and opportunities to generate the levy for the fire department? I have a, I have a, an agreement, I just got it today from him. Do not get a chance to make copies for you all, but that is something that I would look like to, I need to have him make some edits to it. But I'd like to look at that specifically, kind of figure this, kind of figure that tax rate on the fire department. And just again, with his experience with engaging with other fire districts and fire departments across the state. I feel like his expertise could be very helpful for us as we look to the future of the fire department. So I'd like to ask for approval to kind of engage with that. But I also note, since I just got it today, I don't know that you guys would feel comfortable approving something like that. Obviously it would be legal review and making sure that we were satisfied with it. So I don't know how you guys feel about that or if you want to kind of wait until like have a better handle on what his, the agreement's an agreement, but.
I mean, I feel like it's pretty important and needs to get moving. I would say my opinion would be to go ahead.
Uh, go ahead and enter the engagement.
Yeah, because I think the fire department needs more money and we need to get moving on it.
It doesn't need to be funded. Does anybody else have any?
And I trust Carmen's.
You can enter in the engagement to have dialogue and conversation, not necessarily.
Well, I mean, I think we, we would need to pay, he's an attorney, he's going to want to get paid.
Those damn attorneys. I mean, that's three of them we discussed tonight.
I know how I feel about those people. I, I'm, I'm fine with entering into that engagement. It is some interesting need, but if anybody wants to take more time to think about it, I certainly respect that as well. Let's just do a quick by acclamation. I think Laura expressed that she would like to move ahead. Can I treat that as a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to authorize Carmen to engage with Mr. Bellamy on this issue of the fire department levy?
Yes, second.
All right, vote by acclamation, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Good to go.
Thank you. More things, just some dates to keep in mind. Sorry, Carmen likes to talk. The eclipse, we met with town leadership, met with the local county leadership team last week. And internally, we're planning on a meeting on November 20th just to kind of get our ducks in a row and discuss plan for the day. So the, the eclipse is scheduled for April 8th of 2024, so stay tuned on that. And then the Christmas lunch and employee recognition is going to be on December 15th. I would highly encourage all of you to attend. We have some outstanding elected officials. And we've got some employees that we'd like to recognize. And the Santa parade is December 16th.
Thank you.
One thing to detract Santa this year.
Sean, do you have anything for us? You got it? All right, I think Chief Ship had some business for us.
What I'm trying to do is update the way the police department, police officers, who are their holiday days. In the past, this was made a few chiefs ago. Well, normally, let me explain how our officers get their holidays, get that holiday pause on a day they're working. And they work that day, they get an extra day back throughout the year to take. So when we go through the schedule, usually out of the, it's 12, 13 holidays, we end up getting six. And then on one rotation, they'll get seven, obviously, years. And then at the end of the year, it's hard to keep track of if you worked that holiday to earn that day. And then we come at the end of the year, New Year's Eve, or if you worked that day, then you don't get it back. But I mean, it falls over to the next year. This is just some housekeeping. I'm trying to clean it up. I've done a survey. I went and talked to other chiefs, the sheriff department, Greenwood, Franklin. The way they do theirs, they issue the police department a set amount of holidays, which is whatever the town board approves or the county commissioners approve. That's issued to the officers up front. January 1st, they get that amount of days. And it's just to strike off the list. If you take a holiday, you list it as a holiday and move your calendar down, keeps track of what you take. It's issued up front. What we're asking is just to kind of hit, the goal, not ask for every holiday that the town approves, but we're asking for at least eight up front that we can keep track. And then they can use a holiday every two days, every two months, couple of holidays, clean it up. And I talked to the sheriff department. They even issue theirs where they can take all their holiday pay at once. But if they leave the department during that year, they have to, it gets reimbursed out of pay. So that's kind of their guideline to cover that. Just trying to get us back up our benefits, you know, our guys, I mean, we don't get the full, having the past years is something I wanted to do and looked at for a couple of years and just probably going to bring it to you guys to get it updated. Get some of the holidays back and it's easier to track. Trying to see if you worked that day, you know, fill in that for two weeks. If you work a holiday to earn a holiday, it's just confusing. So I started researching like the other police departments too. And they just issue a straight up amount to start the year and that goes from there.
And so since you guys do 12s, the eight roughly comes out to approximately the same number of hours as a regular employee, right?
We do 12, 12 hour shifts. And actually, if you figure the hours, we do 96 hours more a year than, than your regular employees. But then our, kind of get sure on their holidays that they're getting. So we're at least asking for eight.
And I, I don't have any interest in doing paybacks. That's always, I've always found that when someone separates and you're like, oh, you got to pay us to leave. Do you think it would make sense to, if it is like three or two or three after three months, two or three after three months? And then a bunch at the end of six or do you?
We kind of broke it down and where they could use two, I mean, it's two days every two months.
Or if you don't see it being an issue, I don't have any, I think the way that, what I had read said that it was basically on the first year, you got them all. If you don't see it being an issue with your scheduling, I'm not going to.
And it doesn't affect the pay. I mean, there's no money involved. It's more of an administrative. It's easier for me to go and look, when they're taking this day off to get that shift, you know. It's just easier to count of how to keep track of your days.
Yep.
If you give the days upfront and you're saying eight days, let's say January 1st, eight days, and then the officer decides to leave, that he already has eight days and use those eight days. How do you get that? How do you balance that out?
Okay, if he leaves day one.
Or say it's January 1st.
Yeah, it doesn't, no, you got to be there to get them. I mean, that's why.
In our memo, we put that two days per month is the max they're allowed to play Mexico in holidays. So that'll try to prevent them, like they get their eight on January 1st. But then they can only use a maximum of two in January, two in February. That type, that just tried to reduce them using all 12, leaving January.
Before they accrue them.
You know, whatever maybe. So they dish them out in their sheet, but our internal memo is that they can only use a maximum. So if they, if they take days off, they use two days of floating and then three vacation days, you know, however it works out. But that just limits those floating. We also did a prorated on the backlog memo for new hires. So if you get hired in the first quarter, you might, you could, you get six days. If you're hired, you know, in February or March, you're only get six days versus the people that start on January 1st, where somebody that comes in later in the year, they're going to get less. And so we've got a proration table so they're not, somebody that starts on in September doesn't get what somebody got in January, the same number. Try to win it back.
When they leave, I think what you're asking, when they leave, they don't get a day paid leaving. No, once you leave your vacation or your holiday, they don't go with that.
I was just leaning towards that.
It is a dump, but there's relevance on what supervisory you're going to get approved for. When they turn in a PTO request and they say, I want to take seven floating holiday days in January.
I mean, like vacation, when we put vacation in your PTO, we're not going to put those holidays. You don't put holidays in PTO.
That's what we're asking.
That's what this, that's what this request is for.
So if we dump those eight days, how do I not pay them when they leave?
Because in our, the same way you don't pay out additional time beyond what the handbook states. This is going to state in the handbook, this is not a paid out time. This is, you know, it's, it is identified in here. It's not a PTO time that gets paid out, just like there's a maximum of sick time that gets paid out. It's supervisor discretion on it. They even get it paid out, you know, whenever they do. So it kind of goes back to all of that.
I don't have any problem. I'm in favor of it. I've, I've discussed this issue with officers actually for a couple of years now.
And it's just something that we're going to have to add to it to people, retention of officers, because I'm getting where.
And we have excellent retention from talent. As long as we have excellent retention, none of those things we kind of really talked about become much of an issue because people don't want to leave and, and my estimation, people don't want to leave. And I do think that when you're on a 12 hour shift and you're, you don't have scheduling flexibility, just like Julia said, you know, in law enforcement, then I can just take off whatever days I want, when I want, how I want. I do certainly think that we should give them some, the benefit of, of all the holidays without them having to jump through a bunch of scheduling hoops.
And one thing he also did, he would say, this comes into play like this year, I think Christmas falls on a Sunday, but the town observes it on Monday. So our shifts change. So the people that work Sunday, that work the actual holiday, they don't earn anything. They're working the holiday, you know, not getting anything back. Because it's the next day, the people that work on the other shift on the A, on the, on Monday, when the town actually observes it, they're the people that earn it, but the other shift work. So that, that's going to help prevent this for them as well.
Yeah, and that's kind of kicking the rim.
Chief Ship, I have a question. You made mention of the previous is kind of hard to track. Okay, so how are you going to track all this then?
It's issued straight up front. When they take, it's on their time sheet. If they take a holiday, now that eight, say, they want to take a holiday, January 5th. They listed on their time sheet that day they're taking off is a holiday. Now they instead of having eight, they have seven. So it's just marked off.
But you're still, you still can only use two days per quarter though. So you still have to have a tracking mechanism that's functional and efficient.
The tracking more so is when it gets submitted to payroll to get paid out, they have to list it on a specific area of their time sheet. So that like if, say, Officer Polly works on Christmas Day, he will, he has to list it in a different column than an officer who didn't work that day, where they would list their regular time. And then it's the responsibility of the payroll department to make sure, oh, that's in that column. I've got to put that day on their time sheet. It's a tracking thing like that. That's, that's the hard thing because, yes, we all are human and we make mistakes. They can put it in their regular earned column versus that holiday earned column. They're not going to see it's not in that column, so they're not going to give them that day. And then we have to go back and figure it out. Yes, they were there, they just were in the wrong column on the time sheet. They did earn that day back. So that's the tracking.
So payroll is.
Done by the pull himself, the sergeant reviews his time sheet and it's reviewed before returning it to them.
And then payroll is on board on the tracking mechanism and adjustments?
Not so much to use as tracking, if that makes sense.
Do you understand what they're talking about?
It's going to make it easier on you, Deb, to be honest. We don't have to keep track, did you work that day or did you work that day?
Yeah, implementing, it's the only thing I'm, yeah, I have to.
All right, so do we need to make a motion? Yeah, I think. Yeah, I think, so since we're the Board of Public Safety, we have the authority to amend the handbook to do this, right?
Tell me what the personnel, I, I haven't seen the memo, but is it proposed to amend the personnel policy or something specific to the police department? I guess we use or?
What's in our employee handbook? It's, it's a portion of our employee handbook, the police department.
It's outlined, if you look, we've even read more.
Yeah, we have a section.
We have a section that shows what the state handbook...
Simple answer is council has the authority to amend the handbook. And however you want to do it, you could authorize conceptually approved certain treatment going forward after tonight, or you can authorize us to prepare a resolution or ordinance to, you know, back to the December meeting so that you have it in writing, spelled out clearly what the amendment to the handbook would be.
Well, I think that Chief Ship, by which I mean Julia, gave us the language that they're seeing, which is, if you're going to read this, I think, I believe that is the request to change.
No, we can't do it immediately.
You can't do it.
Jay Warren.
Thank you.
Handbook, because there's been so many federal state guidelines that are left out of our handbook that we've had to add.
Sounds like you're anticipating this would go into effect January 1, 2024? So it sounds like there's no urgency to, other than to direct that we prepare a resolution or ordinance and bring it back to the December meeting consistent with that request. That's fine by me. Does that cause you any heartburn too?
Well, wouldn't you do that if we bring a new handbook?
When, when's that?
If we have a new handbook that can be brought timely.
Right, next month. It's almost ready, but when Chief brought this to me, I wanted to present to you all in the nature of if it was, you know, however it impacted, it would, it would narrow what was approved and that it would come in next month, but...
Can we just direct that whatever draft of the handbook has, comes before us next month, that it includes Chief's proposal?
Yeah.
Work for everybody? All right. Thank you, Chief. All right. Public comment? Hearing none, council comment?
Yes.
That was public comment.
Public comment.
Come on, come on up.
Hey, I just...
Just hang on, come up to the podium and tell us your name and where you live, if you would, please.
Kerry Reimer.
I'm sorry.
Kerry Reimer.
Kerry Reimer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
R E Y, man. Yes, I live over at Fire Creek. Just in, what's your, you're going to have to...
Can you, excuse me, can you state your address, please?
214 Bohicket Road.
Thank you.
So I probably have the lesson twenty implications. And it all stems around water. And I know we, we talked about today, we're counting rates. I moved here from Greenwood, we had a house up in Greenwood for about eight years, moved here, built over there, love it, love the neighborhood. The water rates are insane. And I understand that the town, like the town manages the water rates. I've done some research looking, like Indian American Water, like if you buy from them, Greenwood, New Whitelands, Franklin, they're like thirty-two cents for a hundred gallon is their rate. We're paying like seventy-two cents a hundred gallon as residents. So what I want to ask is you guys to really take a look at that when you look at this research being done is why do, I, because I've asked her straight up on the phone, why do we own the water? Like why is Indian American Water not providing it to us for thirty-two, thirty-four, thirty-five cents a hundred gallons? Even if they raise the rate by fifty percent, it's still cheaper. And why I bring this to you guys is I put in irrigation system, I want my yard to look nice. I'm not rich. I mean, I make good money, but I want my yard to look nice, as do most of my neighbors. My neighbor John has an irrigation system as well. I have two kids. I do have a, a good income, but I'm not filthy rich rolling in the money. Oh, thanks, I wouldn't move White if I was, I'd have some big mansion out in the woods or something. But my water bill, four or five hundred dollars, water alone. There was, there was a glitch last year when we first moved here with some decimal point thing, Carmen can probably tell you more about it, where it was all jacked up. Played in our favor, actually. We're watering our lawn, played in our favor. I'm not, I'm not naive to that. We put in irrigation system, I start getting two, three, four hundred dollar water. While I live in Greenwood, now I'm just presenting this stuff to you. We were able to like submit paperwork to the town and say, hey, I watered my lawn this month. Like I know you guys have a summer rate and it goes May to August 31st. So you were able to submit outside of that window and say, hey, I watered my lawn. So like, for example, my September bill where I watered my lawn, because I had cranking come treat my lawn, I want to water my lawn, getting ready to go into the winter, my sewer rate for watering my lawn was two hundred and forty-five dollars. I'm paying you guys five hundred dollars for September for my water bill. My three neighbors behind me quit watering their lawn. Straight up, like they're like, I can't afford to water my lawn, I don't have three, four hundred dollar water bill. So, and I know some of my neighbors have come to you last year talking about money, right? But the, the meters are right. Like they've replaced, they put in a new meter, make sure the meters are right, the flow is right, we've done everything. I check, I'm sure what I'm paying is what I use as is my neighbor. It's just the rate. The rate is insane. And I love this community, my wife's lived here her whole life. I have not. I grew up in Mooresville, moved here. The thing is, is I don't want this neighborhood, and I say this and I hope I don't offend anybody, to start to turn out to end up being like Mooresville Road area, where nobody takes care of crap and everybody starts selling and rental companies start coming in. You have a lot of nice neighborhoods getting built, D.R. Horton, Ryan Homes, other areas. People can't afford to take care of their stuff and start moving, you know? What, what are we doing here? And when you look it up, we're the only town between Greenwood and Franklin that manages our own water. And I, I don't, I, I just come to ask for you guys to take a serious look at it. I'd ask Carmen, why do we manage it? She really said, come to you guys, maybe you guys could explain why we manage the water? Do you guys know?
Well, we own our own utility and have for, I don't know how long. The utility operates, you know, it's a, it's a non, so it's a non-regulated by the I U R C utility, but it, you know, functionally, we do need to look at rates, which is what we voted to do earlier tonight. I can't give you a breakdown of what goes into the current rate off the top of my head. Probably would be able to after that, but at the moment, I mean, each municipality is served by a utility. You know, some contract with Indiana America to do that. Some have their own, we're one of the ones that still has its own. Indiana America's generally tried to force most of the ones that have their own out so they can be fully monopolized, but they haven't gotten us yet. They're trying, have been.
Yeah, I mean, I've had them before, no complaints, but I'm not on the business side of it for you guys. And I know, I mean, I've heard the money, it's obviously money revenue from it somehow. You know, you guys have to pay people to maintain it. You guys have to maintain everything, so you have to make an overhead. Like looking just at the structure, when she sent me the cost structure, really, the cost structure is insane of, you don't start to actually get a break until you're in the forty, fifty, sixty thousand gallon usage rate. So to me, that's your bigger companies, your warehouses that are coming in, people like that that may be getting breaks, opposed to the people that just want to use twenty, we use twenty, twenty-five thousand gallons a month. Between house and water. Watering. Yeah. And we're like, we're paying insane. And I did the math, I could go, I mean, I've, I had an underground pool in my house, I filled it because it was cheaper than buying a tank of water. And I put ten thousand gallons in every spring and I never broke a hundred and fifty dollars, a hundred and seventy dollar water bill. And I mean, I'm like, I could put ten thousand gallons down my lawn, I'm paying you guys stupid amount of money, so.
Well, I, like I said, we're looking at it, obviously. And I won't really be able to give you an educated answer until I see the breakdown of where it sits. But I think that it, there probably is a problem in that we haven't looked at that rate in ten or twenty years. In ten or twenty years, so it's definitely going to need some revising. I can't give you an answer of what that's going to look like, but I would certainly think that your concerns would be addressed in that analysis.
Yeah, that and the sewer being able, like I think something that Greenwood does, I think we should, like the town should really look at is being able to have, not whatever the form, but there was a form, you literally could call in and sign and say, I filled my whatever pool, or I watered my lawn this month. And like you couldn't do it like all the time, but they also gave you a summer rate, like you guys, I think it's thirty, thirty-two, thirty-five, whatever, here.
Summer sewer discount is the average of the five months in the winter. So that is no sprinkling, no pool filling, nothing.
Okay, well, mine was like, mine was like thirty-two, thirty-five dollars. That's what I'm saying, like...
Well, yeah, the...
A new home gets to thirty-two, sixty to start off with, because you haven't earned that average discount yet. So coming around to the next year, this November, December, January, February, March, you'll have created an average, that will apply the next, to the summer. So that's how that's determined.
Yeah, I mean, I know I'm only using four thousand gallons. Like my water softener, I have water trackers, so it tracks. So I'm only going to pay four thousand gallons worth of sewer. So it's not going to be, I mean, it might be fifty bucks, maybe, I don't know. I mean, I'm okay with that. Like I'm not unreasonable in paying two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars when I'm watering my lawn this summer. I get it, there's a cost, it's free. But I just think residents paying five hundred dollars, you know, to water your lawn is insane.
All right, well, thanks, sir.
Just a little quick, you guys. After the last conversation I had with Kieran, as well, I did call Mooresville since they clean their water as well. And just kind of, what's looking forward to when you offer a special name, this town went so many days without any prep. And so they, they shared a couple of different programs that they offer specifically for new home builders. So again, as we look at the rates, you may have some different pricing options to consider as well, so.
Okay.
I hear, we hear them.
Yeah, we bought them all new meters. And those are...
The other concern would be water pressure. You've got several new subdivisions with D.R. Horton coming in, and our water pressure in Fire Creek is weak. And just a lot of people that are going to start pulling even more, more, another double in our subdivision alone, which is putting in a stream and two of them out, and of course some D.R. Horton subdivision is going, and that's even bigger than ours than that.
If you want to speak, sir, come on up and give us your name and address, please.
John, John S T H A L K, I've chalked with an S, 224 Bohicket Road. Yeah, the, the other adoption, or the other challenge is water pressure itself. It's very, very weak in our neighborhood. And I was told, because we live at the cul-de-sac, something about we don't get the water flows coming from both ways, it just comes and ends, so our water pressure is always going to be a little weak anyway. But having it weak right now, my only guess is because the infrastructure isn't changing in the next two to three years that I know of, the new subdivisions coming in are going to be pulling from those towers too. And that's going to, I would imagine, reduce the pressure even more.
Okay.
And when you can't even run two sprinklers at the same time, that's pretty weak water pressure.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hearing none, hold your...